7:03. 7:03, it's 7:03, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If you would all please join me for the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I want to apologize to folks that are here for us running a few minutes late. We're taking care of an item with our attorney that does not belong to tonight's meeting. That being said, we have minutes to take care of, so for motion on the minutes of August 18th. We have a motion by Gigi, a second by Andy. Is there any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? And the promotion on the meeting minutes of August 24th.
Motion to approve of.
Seconded, so moved by Andy, seconded by Gigi. Any changes to the August 24th minutes? All in favor? Aye, that's a dealt with. Okay, we are, brings us to public comments.
Yeah, I want to know what's up with busing from my kids to the high school.
So, sir, if I can just give you kind of an update, the way public comments work, it's an opportunity for you to address the board. It is not a question or an opportunity for back and forth.
I can barely hear you, I'm half deaf.
Sorry. So, public comments are not a back and forth question and answer. You're welcome to make a statement to the board. We will be discussing a number of items tonight. You're welcome to sit through the conversations, the discussions.
Is the busing part of it, or?
We will have an update on busing, Patty.
It's on the agenda, but I can give one if you'd like.
So Patty will be able to give us an update on busing later in the meeting. And then you're welcome to provide comments at the end of the meeting if you'd like, sir.
Like I said, that's the only reason I'm here.
Okay. Do we have any other public comments? None? Okay. January view, we're gonna need the board number, so how many items I want to add to the agenda? Go ahead.
I will give you a bus update. We have a question from Chris about fire alarms. And we have a July invoice from Dale Transportation that the board wanted to review.
Perfect, alright. So, do you want to, where do you want to place us, Patty? Might just do F?
F and, yep.
G and so on?
Yep.
Okay. So, we'll do bus, invoice, and alarm?
Sure.
As page. Okay, and then Jeff, did you need us to move the high school? Not the high school, I'm sorry, the building expansion?
Yeah, we could move that to the top of the board, your place.
Okay. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yep.
Alright, I think Jeff has got a, what is it, 8:30, Jeff?
8:15.
8:15, okay. So we'll try to be cognizant of that. Any other items? None, okay. So, any consent items, Patty?
No.
Alright. As far as correspondence goes, I sent Patty some information consistent with what we've seen the last few weeks, emails supporting mask wearing or not mask wearing. I think we're gonna be talking about that a little bit more shortly. Does anybody else have anything they needed to add? Okay, Patty?
Yes.
Key, it's up to you.
Kristen made color copies. Since this is a color-coded matrix, we thought we might like to have colors. We're going to use the same one in each case, and we have to. So, at the last board meeting, I had shared the decision-making matrix that was in the toolkit that the Department of Health and Human Services put out right before school started. We were looking, Dr. Chan had shared with the nurses that we should be looking more closely at our community data, that lots of different news can happen in a county, but you may also want to look at what's going on in your own communities. And from that, the board had asked for some type of matrix with, for just the town of Deerfield. So when we investigated, we looked at the CDC metric and found that if you did the math recommending, recommended that the, by the CDC, it matched what New Hampshire was using in their matrix. So, we used that same formula to develop Deerfield data. And basically, it's per hundred thousand cases. So, what you do on the CDC is the second page defining level of community transition. So it's per day used for a hundred thousand cases. So we simply took the number of cases in Deerfield, divided it by the Deerfield population, and then multiplied it by a hundred thousand to get that number, which is the same way that the CDC did it. So, I also put, oops, did I call it page two on the back page, it's still decided. I have your data for you that Rockingham County is still substantial. There are seven active cases in Deerfield. When you do that math, that puts the town of Deerfield also in substantial spread as the county is. There is clearly, well, not clearly, but we don't have any reports of Deerfield community school students currently with an active case. And then the percent of population fully vaccinated in Deerfield stands at 51.9. The other piece of information that I'll give you before you have conversation is that, we had a conversation in leadership on Friday. We asked Nurse Heisey to join us and talked about, okay, if masks continued to be optional, what kind of criteria would we like to use in the school that would make sense and give us a comfort level that some action could be taken if we had a case in school? So we talked about breaking it out by grade levels because we are still trying to, I think you're still cohorting grade levels for the most part. Is that correct?
Uh, they're mixed during the day, but most of the day they're with their own grades.
So we talked about if we had one active case in a grade level, preschool through sixth grade, that we would ask the entire grade to mask for two weeks or until there were no active cases in that grade level. So we're trying to think of a trigger point where you would, if masks remained optional, of where you would ask students to mask. We also talked about seventh and eighth grade, that since they're more mixed, that if we had one active case in grade seven or eight, that both grades would mask for two weeks or until there were no active cases. We then talked it over with Bonnie and asked for guidance on when we would say, okay, this happened, so now we're asking the entire school to mask. And her suggestion was three or more grade levels with an active case would then trigger the entire school masking for two weeks or until there were no longer three different grade levels impacted. I just want to, you know, remind you, we've talked about this at other meetings, that the lack of guidance is, makes this very difficult for us. And I can't tell you that there's any science behind the three things that I just presented to you. Because there is no guidance. And when, other than to look at your community data. So, this was really just us putting our heads together and thinking about, you know, if we still have optional masks, there has to be a point when we say we think some action needs to be, needs to be taken. So that's where, that is just conversational and something to give to you to start that conversation. If you choose to look at the community data and use the Deerfield community, that suggests that we are at a substantial spread right now or level of transmission. And then the CDC grid would have us fully masked if you're looking at the Deerfield data. So that's what we've put together for you. I have no other guidance other than what we've shared with you through the toolkit of the last meeting. And then just trying to put this matrix to use and apply it to the Deerfield community as a whole.
So, if I can jump in. I talk to, I talk to Patty typically a couple times a week. Actually, earlier this week, I had mentioned to Patty that I would like to find a more clear black and white solution to this. There's never any question that it would have definitive beginnings and definitive ends as to when masking would be appropriate or not. And of course Patty was happy to say, well, we're about three days ahead of you on that one, Mr. Lang was. And so this is kind of, this is a breakdown of what they had done, but also what I had asked Patty to do. And I think it's important for us to look at this pragmatically. Obviously, this is an emotionally charged topic. And if we can find a black and white solution to this that has defined beginnings and defined ends, it makes it a much more palatable thing for a lot of people to understand, you know, understand and support that have opinions on both sides of the equation. So, I'm not advocating for or against anything, but I think it's appropriate for us as a board to have a discussion around, do we want to have some sort of methodology in place that creates a circumstance where it's clear and defined as to what is, when we as a board will say it's an appropriate time to wear or to not wear masks? Are making sense? Isn't that? Gigi?
I think Nate had his hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I saw this.
No, no problem. So the, I like the idea, I, the question I have is, favorite presentation idea about how, when a cohort would mask, did you discuss at all when a cohort would, I mean, go remote probably is gonna happen. But what happens if we have suddenly thirty, thirty cases? Because one or two students come in and we didn't know, you know, we're just hearing stories about how one person in the school can suddenly, boom, you got thirty kids. What happens to those kids if they're, you know, they're not gonna go remote? What happens to them in that case?
So we've talked, the Department of Health in the toolkit has instructed us to call them when we have a case. And they're still wanting to be reviewing cases. And they will determine us to have a cluster if there are more than three students in a new group. They, at this point, are still not doing quarantine. The emergency order has expired, so we can't go remote like we have in the past. So, that's a great question, and I don't have a great answer for you. You know, Bonnie is very uncomfortable with the fact that there is no quarantine requirement now. So, what we would, for.
For close contact.
For close contact.
For close contact, not for infected students.
Right, and infected student absolutely is quarantined.
Sure, make sure we're all clear on that.
But if that student is considered a close contact, they are not quarantining those close contacts, they're asking them to self-monitor. So, or the parents to help self-monitor, depending on the age level.
Which means they could be infected and not wearing masks. And the school has no, there's no recourse because they're quarantining.
So at a minimum, by having the active case in the grade level requiring masking, at least, at a minimum, at that point, that there's an identified need, you have a response to the identified need. And that response also has a definitive end, right?
Sure, I guess my point is that with the incubation period, it's gonna be way too late, and then it's gonna be.
In all fairness, it could be too late before you even know you have your first case.
Yeah.
I agree. So, what's that? Where do you, where do you draw your lines?
I think the one piece I did forget, if I might, I.
No, that's it, we're done. We've come all up.
He said you're running out of time.
I had, I had meant to ask Mrs. Withy and or Ms. Greve to talk to you about what is happening in the school in terms of teaching and learning. And, you know, masks are considered a, an option at this point by the state, but also suggesting that other mitigating factors should be in place. And I kind of wanted to hear from Ms. Greve, or I thought you would want to hear from Ms. Greve or Ms. Withy about what's going on in terms of teaching and learning, and our teachers wanting to have students in small groups and have a morning meeting. And if that's the case without masks, what does the social distancing look like?
Uh, there's very little social distancing in our schools right now. We can't have our kids all back and be more than three feet physically distanced. Uh, but, you know, the.
I think teachers are conscious of this. You know, when they are on the rug, they are trying to spread them out. But their kindergarten, the first, second graders, they have a tendency they get closer and closer and closer together. So, you spend a lot of your time, like, hey, let's move back, let's spread out. So it's just, you know, it happens, and teachers are being aware of it. But at the same time, our middle schoolers, you know, our seventh grade is our largest group. It's sixty-four kids and twenty-one-ish to a classroom. So, they are on top of each other, as they were last year. So, they're in the hallways, they are in IAs together with the eighth graders. So, there's very little, especially in that grade level, there's very little, probably no social distancing happening at all. We have kids in lockers that are next to each other. We actually spaced out all the lockers. So traditionally, we have lockers all the eighth grade together, all the seventh grade, all the sixth grade. They actually spread it out so that they're all over the place. And they all have different changing times, like a schedule essentially. And they are, for the most part, not in the hallway at the same time. So, we're trying to do our part that way. But again, there's, there are overlap times where six and eight might be up together, but we are trying to keep the hallways a little clear.
Yeah, I mean, as a, as a high school teacher, I have ninth graders who are older than the ones that, and they still, I mean, three feet is hard for kids who haven't seen each other for a long time. And it is, it is difficult to maintain the spacing. My, in my school district, they are wearing masks. So, when I look at my class of twenty-one kids, I'm not feeling like, yeah, I'm trying to keep them separated, but it's not like I've got this kind of weight on my shoulders that because they have masks, if somebody does come in positive, I'm not gonna have a class full of kids who are now taking that home to their families. And so I feel a little bit better about that. But I have a hard time picturing what that would feel like as a teacher, looking at a class full of kids, knowing any one of them could be positive right now. And with no masks, they are, it's just gonna spread all over the school. And it's gonna be too late when we find out. So I have concerns about that. And that's more from my professional perspective as a teacher. I wouldn't want to be doing that to my kids and their families. And that's my position about this, I think. It's better to be safe.
John?
What are you hearing from staff and kind of the, you know?
Sense?
The sense of the, you know, school community on a day-to-day basis as far as the mask wearing goes, comfort level among educators?
I think our younger, our younger classroom teachers are more masked than in staff, more masked than the older, most of, there's a couple middle school, fifth grade and up teachers that are, but, and same with our kids. Not more, the more younger, the younger students are masked than older students. And.
Like, yes, and it was, just kind of seeing kids in the hallways walk around, I would say about thirty percent of the kids are wearing masks. So that's just, well, our, us, you know, general observation, no, no solid data on that.
Um, but I, teachers have not waited one way or another with, you know, I feel really uncomfortable, I felt nobody has mentioned anything to either Brian or I. And then Bonnie is usually pretty upfront with it, like somebody came to me and wanted to talk about. But everyone's just doing what they can. And I haven't heard much grumbling one way or another, I think.
Has Bonnie given you?
That was an odd answer is what that was.
Yeah, it was an odd answer, circle around. Bonnie is, would let us mask. She would, and she is, in her opinion, it's not if we will mask, it's when we will be masking.
I don't disagree with her in that regard. I think it's an inevitable fact. I just don't want to do it. I feel like it should have a beginning and an end. And I have supported a beginning and then do a lot of things throughout this whole process. And so to me, if it's defined in this black and white, it's a much more. It had, I, I just feel like it needs to have, we have to have a line in the saying, well, we started a line in the saying, we stopped. And ultimately, I think that's, that's my mentality behind this. Because otherwise, we're gonna end up wearing masks for the rest of our lives. And I don't, it's not a world I want to, so I want to find.
I, I, this is real quick.
Absolutely.
And I just try to go back to look at like the science, and I try to look at also our responsibility. So, my two things that I'm thinking is, I've been thinking about, if the CDC is saying, and they've been saying for quite some time, that they are recommending that pre-K through twelve inside the mask. And New Hampshire has set up a matrix that says when your county is substantially, have substantial community spread, that universal masking is important. And so I'm wondering then, if we begin to like see a big uptick in school, what is our, as a board, what's our culpability of saying, well, we just really just decided because we want to have these things, we want to have a beginning and an end, or we want to have a sense of normalcy, or we want these other things? How, what, what does that play out when people come back and say, well, you, you simply just denied the things that you said that you were gonna use in your documents as guidelines earlier on? So that's one question I have is. And I guess the other thing that I was looking at is, you know, a year ago, we probably had about three percent of kids in younger ages were getting COVID. And now it's up into the twenty-two percent. And again, there are also more hospitalizations occurring. And yes, they are not occurring right now here in New Hampshire. But they are occurring in other places, and we don't have any artificial borders. You know, we have parents that travel for work, so they fly to other places and they come back. So, and believe me, I, having been in education, wouldn't want anybody to have to wear this all day, really. But on the other hand, I would hate to see the fact that we get to this point where we're going backwards and that people are getting sick, so many kids get sick or so many teachers get sick that we can't carry on the education. And I look at the impact right now, like, I guess I, I err on the side of caution based on the science. That would, that would be my thinking. And I'm wondering what our, what our culpability is if we're not following what we said we were gonna follow in terms of the documents that we were using.
I agree, and I think it would be so much different if we were dealing with a high school where every student was, had access to vaccinations if they chose to do that. And if they were choosing not to be vaccinated, individual freedom, go to it. But when nobody in the building under the age of eleven can be vaccinated, like, what are we, what are we doing? I don't know, I feel like I would love to be on the side of caution and safety and erring on that side rather than discovering too late that you allowed an infection that was involved with it. And then putting masks on that for that.
So at the moment, our current plan is to operate without masks. So absent a motion for supporting the proposed plan, modification of proposed plan, or some other change? Maybe?
I was gonna say, so I think I support the current policy or procedure of optional mask. With the language that we've been provided by the administration for rules and or conditions-based approach to adding masks to the school, is that something that would need like a motion? Or how do we move forward with something like that?
I think if we're going to take a position that differs from the position we took last week, we should go with a motion. Can you give that, Patty?
I guess I'd like to make a motion to amend our mask policy to include the conditions, or, yeah, I think conditions is a good word, the conditions that were proposed by administration.
Okay, so that would be the one active case in the grade level, pre-K through six, and the entire grade level would be masked. I'm assuming this is some of these.
Yeah.
So that's the, the conditions would be one active case in a grade level, pre-K through six, and the entire grade level would be masked for two weeks or until there are no cases in that grade. And a single active case in grade seven or eight would require both grade levels to mask for two weeks or until there are no active cases in those grades. And then three or more grade levels with active cases and the entire school would mask for two weeks or until there are no longer three grade, grade levels with cases. Correct? Okay. So we have a motion by Andy to adopt that language into our procedures. We have a second. Second. We have a motion by Andy, a second by Jeff to adopt the language as just written into our procedures for masking students and staff. That being said, do we have any additional discussion? Andy, go ahead, it's your motion.
Just like to share that some of the feedback that I'm getting from the community is their priority and preference and desire to have the kids in the building, obviously. And they don't want to pivot to remote. I think by moving incrementally towards conditions when we will effectively mandate masks is a good step to support both folks who choose not to have their children wear masks and families that choose to have their children wear masks. And I think it's trying to find that equilibrium between those groups that'll at least give us some data and some kind of guidelines other than, you know, what we have just based on, you know, community and then, you know, the level of, you know, transmission. So.
I think, go ahead.
I'd like, oh wait.
No.
I was gonna ask Chris about what, in terms of how the balance of kids choosing not choosing, or families choosing not choosing masks, how that plays out in terms of students getting along, social-emotional kind of concerns where, you know, is there, it's not a lot different than kids picking on each other for some other reason? But do you see comments, do you hear comments, have you heard from teachers concerns about students because they've got a mask on, let's say, or because they don't have a mask on, that they are in the blood of some sort of, I don't know, remark or comment?
Nothing up for masks.
Yeah.
I don't think there were many.
They're just picking on each other in this environment.
And every morning announcements, I make the announcement that, you know, if your family has asked you to wear a mask, you are expected to wear a mask throughout the day. Some people will, will wear masks and some people won't, and then we just leave it at that. When you see Mr. Greve and Mrs. Withy walking around the building, we will have masks on. And there's, that's just the expectation in the building. I have not gotten anything yet. I have noticed that at the beginning, more middle schoolers were wearing masks. And as time, as the week has gone on, there's been less and less. So I don't know if that's part of it, is that they get here and they realize, oh, uh, no one else is wearing a mask, I'm not going to either. And they, but we do encourage them to keep their masks on if their family has made that decision. And we've not gotten any reports that kids are being masked. It's basically what the, the current phrase is in terms of.
Phrase you never thought you'd hear two years ago? Okay, thank you. Uh, Andy?
Uh, tangent, because I like to bring up policies. Do we need to amend our bullying policy, do we need to do language about, something about masks?
Big bullying or bullying?
Okay.
Being that guy?
Left field.
Tangent.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor to add the language. Do we have any additional discussion regarding the motion? If not, we're gonna vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Andy closed. So that is four, bill one. Gigi, you hold for?
I, I said I, yeah.
I couldn't hear you through the mask.
Wise guy. I, 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 I.
Jeff?
So what is it?
It's four.
Question for you, Patty. What would Deerfield's case number be to not be at, how many cases in Deerfield could we have to be under?
You should press the universal.
Uh, that's a good question. Um, the spreadsheet is live, so I would have to plug the numbers in.
Yeah.
So if you, I mean, right, if anyone wanted to do the math, you actually could. So you have seven active cases divided by your population that I do not joke about.
Uh, as a matter of fact though, Patty.
Is it?
Forty-four, it's gonna be six hundred and fifty-two according to the COVID-19 gap for.
Forty-six fifty-two, that sounds right.
From the state of New Hampshire.
So divided by that and then times one hundred thousand. So that gives you a hundred and fifty, and over one hundred is considered substantial.
So basically, a third rest.
Gives you a one fifty.
So four or less should put you under substantial. Because you need a deduction of a third. You gonna verify that with the guide, Patty?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually this is the depressing thing here for.
I don't know if I'm doing that right, did you get a fifteen?
They're multiplied by a hundred thousand after.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I did seven divided by the forty-six thousand.
Not forty-six thousand.
Forty-six hundred.
Four thousand six hundred and fifty. Eric, change that.
What's better than that?
So I got that decimal times a hundred thousand.
Yep.
I got a hundred and fifty point four seven.
Yep.
So then the question is, is what, is the?
What gets you below one hundred? How many cases?
Four.
So once the data is suppressed in our case on the state's dashboard, so the state app takes the dashboard, I think it's every weekday, I don't think it gets updated on the weekends.
They stop updating it on the weekend.
So if you just were to Google, uh, you know, New Hampshire COVID nineteen dashboard, it comes up, you can, there's a bunch of bullet points on the side of the screen and you can effectively go and click everything through. Uh, you have to pick the right bullet point to get the right data set and then you can see, you can highlight Deerfield on the map if you can find it and see where we are.
Do we know what our hospitalization rate is?
No, I don't think they, they don't report that, they only report it by state.
So.
That was from the CDC grid, but New Hampshire's not reporting it like that, I don't, I don't, I think they just say number of hospitalizations.
A lot of the data on the state's website for Deerfield is suppressed because the numbers are, I don't wanna say relatively small, but the data set is small enough where they're suppressing it. Um, I know, my understanding of the reason for them suppressing that is so that it becomes identified. It's a particular question.
So just to be clear, the PCR test positive positivity rate is, our transmission rate is considered suppressed?
Yes.
So you have one data point saying we're suppressed.
Mm-hmm.
We have another one saying it's substantial, right?
The other thing, when we're looking at this Deerfield data column, we have substantial for that, but that's Deerfield, although the cases within the school, there is none. So if you're looking at that, are you looking at that as, is that table reflecting our schools' individual data or is it reflecting this town line data? Well, currently it's reflecting this town line, but you know, it depends on how deep, deep you intend to dive into the numbers. Do we, does this board wanna add any other methods to characterize when we would be masked, unmasked, fully masked, or will we, is this not for that?
Leave it on the agenda.
Well, we're gonna be talking about this.
Yeah, so.
Everybody happy? Well. Yeah, Patty? Patty? Are you happy?
I respect forces.
I'll add this to the, um, plan and, and then we send that out to the community, perfect.
Okay. Okay.
Is it okay if I keep it as a draft, I, um, Kathy, they asked me to take draft off, I feel like it's.
Right, it's approved. I would just leave, I wouldn't send, resend the plan, I would send this, yeah.
Okay. Just add, okay.
Just let everyone see.
Okay.
You know, the data that we're using and then put the this additional language on the desk to send something new that they could, be aware of. Right, we're having help with that.
All right. Uh, we are on E buses. The last gentleman that was curious about the buses, but we still need to hear it, so Patty?
So we, um, I heard from Kelly, she anticipates a driver for the Concord High School bus. Um, she said the beginning of September, and today's the first, so I'm not sure how close to the beginning that she was referring to. So I'll try to get that nailed down a little bit more, but sounded like that that was, that was about to happen. Um, we also have another driver, um, for the elementary routes. Um, Kelly is going to have to redo the routes and update those, adding that driver. Um, she doesn't think that we're at the point where, where we will be able to eliminate, um, the double runs, is that correct? Is that what you understood? Yet, um.
Okay.
But she will redo the routes and at least minimize.
And the sixth elementary driver is in training.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. Okay. So.
But we also are gonna lose a driver in November.
Right.
So we will be back soon.
So we're really, we're really planning to.
Right, we shouldn't count on that other.
Do not, you can't, we'll, we'll be stamping.
Right. Yeah.
All right, so for the sake of anybody that's watching this, just as an update, Dale is currently providing us with one high school bus, four elementary buses. The board has instructed Dale to send our next driver, which will be coming online very shortly, to the high school route. Provide a second bus for Concord High School, which will satisfy the needs of the students of Concord High School. And then the following drivers will be added to the Deerfield routes, which will hopefully at some point allow us to get back to a single run eventually. Got it? That wasn't for us, go ahead, Andy.
Um, as far as we know, the Concord run today, as far as you heard, was fine, I mean, I thought it's coming both directions.
Uh, yeah, I didn't hear any, no news is usually good news. I've been in meetings, but I just checked my email.
Any other questions regarding transportation? At the moment.
Can I make a comment?
You go.
Uh, just an update for the board. Uh, originally when we, uh, set up our two locations here, cafeteria, the, the student RBS estimate was around two forty to two sixty, we are sitting at around one forty. Uh, so, uh, roughly a hundred fan, students of, uh, X amount of families are driving, they're students. We have more drivers now than we did last year. So.
I will add, I came after the
And I was not here.
Pass of a number of families to see the drop-off procedure this morning.
Mm-hmm.
So I sat in the cul-de-sac and watched and I thought.
That's not crazy.
I can't, I can't agree or disagree with people if I don't see it. So I came and saw it and I actually thought it went fairly smoothly considering the number of cars. With that in mind, is there a potential that the families that are currently driving will continue to drive to the extent we have room on the buses to eliminate and enter circles? To try to short-term get back to where we started.
I think they're not gonna drive again. They're trying to avoid the double run.
We're doing, like, we're, we're.
That's why they're driving.
That's why they're driving.
I, I mean, I'll say it from our own experience, although there are days of the week the kids aren't getting on a bus, there are days when, uh, last week is easier, but the days that I can drop them off if my schedule allows, or my wife can, we have been. But it's far from consistent, it just kind of depends on where one of us needs to go and our desire to not have to deal with them at five thirty in the morning. I'm sure a lot of families are in the same boat, right? So I, I wonder if the ridership exchange is consistent on a daily basis or if you're seeing kind of sporadic, I can drive a kid today, I can't drive a kid a little bit, and they would have crap for me. Love to see a point where we're not double running, cause that is immaterial. We just got one. So it's in the break.
Yes. One more question about the Concord, well, the new run that's coming online in the next week or two. Um, have you heard, I think when Kelly was here last meeting, she said that that would be a late run coming home. Do you know if that timing is still correct, did I mishear that?
No, that wasn't my understanding.
Yeah, I don't think so, not when, not when we're adding another driver, that wasn't my understanding.
Okay. It was a second bus coming back at the same afternoon time.
I thought so.
Okay.
But I don't have any information other than we're getting another Concord bus. Soon.
I will add, this is the first time that I can remember that we've actually filled a bus going to Concord. I think for the last number of years, we've been thirty-ish kids on the Concord bus. So we've certainly, the demand is, um.
Yeah, there was two buses, wasn't it, it was thirty, it was a little more than thirty, you had two buses.
Yeah, it was two buses.
Which is too much for one of them.
We've only had one bus going to Concord, if I recall correctly.
No.
But we, who were we combining into two?
Plus.
We were combining three into two. One of them was combining out of their road.
With another bus.
That was two buses, but there was no going on mercury.
Ah, okay, my bad.
Yeah.
Does that sound?
That sounds right, I think so, yeah.
But.
We had a, we had a funky, we combined three into two and had a funky drop-off and exchange.
Thought we were doing two to one.
I'm sorry, you said.
All right. All right, anything else regarding transportation? All right, uh, we have an invoice?
We have an invoice, um, I don't know that there's needs to be a whole lot of discussion because this is a July invoice, so it's not a regular school year, um, transportation invoice. They, um, billed us for the days that they transported students to the summer program. Um, and they did what we asked them to do, so.
What's the total on the invoice?
The total is four thousand nine fifty-three fifteen, and it's going to grant money, grant lines.
So, I'll make a motion, you ask, you ask community administrator to uh, the invoice for forty-nine fifteen to the, um, how's it?
Fifty-three fifteen.
Sorry, forty-nine fifty-three.
Yep, fifty-three fifteen.
Forty-nine fifty-three fifteen. Any discussion? Ever?
Aye.
Aye.
That was an easy one.
Okay.
And you have some information regarding alarms?
So I received an, an email from Mrs. Whitty, do you want, do you have it in front of you or I might go ahead and take it?
No, you can take it.
Okay. Um, so Chris was letting us know that he has his annual, um, inspection with the fire department on Thursday around two. Um, and that since we've had problems with the fire alarm panel over the last two or three years, um, the fire department and the state marshal will be looking for action on the panel probably by the end of twenty twenty-one, and he wanted to have an update on where we were at and so that he could provide them with that information of what your intentions are.
I proposed, he lets them know that if the board's okay with it, Lavalley-Brennsinger will be here September tenth doing walkthrough for all our systems. And I'd suggest that we have, instruct Chris to have him take a look at that and make that for our.
Can you ask, uh, Chris has been at those meetings anyway, right?
Yes. Um, that won't be in our contract, Lavalley.
So it'll be a change order on both outside.
Cause it's, yeah, it's an existing facility, but they've got the people and they're gonna be, you know, building, so.
And I, I think that was, you had talked about having someone look, a professional look at it.
Chris's request was to have it rehandled.
Pretty significant, yeah.
Yeah.
So if, I'll just let him know that he can update them that there is action being taken, that we're having them look at it.
The question I have to you is, perhaps, or remember, how they would handle that. I'm guessing it's not gonna be huge money, but would it be something we'd have to put out to bid for engineers to look at it? Or is it, if it's low cutting of cost, could we just do it as a change order?
Yeah, I mean, you can, I think you can do it as a change order since you've already contracted with them to do facility, the, the work on the facility and that's part of it. And we didn't include it in the bid.
Yeah.
I can, I'll double check with Amber.
Perfect. Uh, any other questions regarding the alarm panel? None?
Who's gonna take action on, well, so Amber will look into it and then Chris will request pricing from them, or who should request pricing for the design work?
I think Justin, working with Jeff and Amber, I think of probably.
Patty and I.
Oh, you and Patty, sorry.
Yep. I will get advice from Amber. I, is it okay for Chris to let them know that it's a priority for them to look at the fire panel? And then when I find out from Amber what we need to do in terms of the contract, um, you and I can be on the same email to them.
Perfect, yeah, I just wanna drop the ball and not ask.
Is that work? Yeah. Yeah.
Moving on. Uh, board reports, the PTO is not present. I do wanna make sure that we acknowledge and thank the PTO and the volunteers for their efforts at the barbecue. Uh, I think we had a, a pretty good turnout considering the circumstances, it was warm. But I feel like, uh, everybody that I saw was smiling and happy and enjoyed, uh, uh, a couple delicious cheeseburgers cooked by, uh, their board members. Uh, and I think, uh, it's always important to recognize the PTO and everything they do and the volunteer if it's a, put forth. So while they're not here to receive thanks, hopefully they catch one. Uh, Nate, has the executive board?
We didn't have any.
This time.
All right, so, let's see here, oh my god, Jeff, I apologize. I moved you up, uh, Jeff, building expansion.
Uh, so we met with Lavalley-Brennsinger two weeks ago. Um, got a progress update from them. Behind the scenes, everything's moving as it should, on track. They have, back two weeks ago, they were about fifty percent away through digitizing all the plans that we had given them, building, the model on their computer. Um, on the front end, everything is also moving fine. They met with, uh, staff today, I believe, um, to interview them, get their thoughts and get them involved in the process. I'm sure, um, Ms. Whitty will give you more information about that update. Um, the we have some action items as a committee that were sent out, um, and I'm working with uh, PTO to try and develop, uh, I'm not the best person probably for it, but we need to develop a community outreach mechanism that is really gonna engage with everybody in the community. Um, so, I'm waiting to hear back from PTO, who's gonna step up to volunteer for that role. Um, we need to develop the social media presence and, and get all the correct information out. Um, and also engage with the community to see how we can make this, you know, um, you know, a, something that benefits the entire community and get input from people early on. I was still on track for the twenty twenty-two bond vote, they are confident that they can meet that deadline, so. I think it's good.
Question, probably more so for you, Patty, but it may help us lay some groundwork in advance. What is involved in preparing the documentation to get a warrant with bond on the ballot? Is it as simple as us placing the warrant article, or is there advanced work that can be done that coincides with what's currently going on with the sharing study? So that whereas.
I'm gonna touch base with Amber because she just did that, um, for Allenstown. So she's been through this process and has much more experience, so, um, I'll let her know if there's any.
So if we could. Report that so that maybe we can.
Pretty work that can be done.
Coinciding work done so that we're, uh, maximizing our timetable. That would be huge.
Our next meeting is gonna be prior to the school board meeting, September fifteenth. They'll be at the facility here September tenth, doing, uh, all the inspections, walkabouts.
Okay. Um, thank you. Any questions for Jeff? None, all right, uh. Ms. Whitty. Central's report.
Yes, so this covers our, uh, from our last meeting, August nineteenth through today, September first. Um, just wanna make sure that I mentioned that the PTO is, is bringing their, uh, coffee camper. I'm sorry, it's on Friday, Patty. Right now, the coffee camper owners apparently have stuff to do. So.
I didn't know about that yet.
Okay, well, here's, I'm just informing you, uh.
If it's news, it's news to Andy.
Uh, they, they will be here on Wednesday, next Wednesday, the eighth, they had to do it earlier this year, uh, so we will, uh, the staff will thoroughly.
Will you, Andy, a second, we jot that down, so he's ready for it?
Yeah, what time is this happening?
Um, I think they're here, I, I, I.
Right in the.
You send them an email, we find out.
I think it's actually, yeah, it's, it's before drop-off.
Out, right after drop-off.
Right after drop-off.
So by seven, by eight o'clock, the cars are cleared up. We, today was a little earlier, out of no offense, but, um.
The exact.
Or with Trish.
It, and nothing to do with me, I can enjoy you as that.
Um, I think it's eight to ten.
Cool.
Yeah.
It's news, it's, it's for Andy.
So. Yes.
I got a job that I just found out about.
Um, so just to continue on, we welcome certified staff back on Monday, August twenty-third. And we, uh, welcome back all staff on Tuesday, August twenty-fourth. The back-to-school open house and barbecue was a great success. We welcomed several families that evening and a big thank you to all the staff who stayed to meet and greet the students and families, and an even bigger thank you to our school board, PTO and our superintendent who stood, set up, cooked, served and cleaned up that, that evening. Um, I also wanna make sure I mention, um, they, thank Meredith St. Ange, Meredith, as you know, is our kitchen, um, our kitchen. But I never go to.
Food service director?
Thank you, thank you, she's got a bigger name than kitchen lady. Service director, and she ordered all the burgers and hot dogs and rolls and chips and, um, it saved Trish a million trips to Sam's and Costco and BJ's and.
I thank her.
Uh-huh, it was, it was great to have her, she just ordered it through all of her co-op, got it all in, ordered it Wednesday, it was here.
Ordered it Tuesday, it was here Wednesday.
Mm-hmm, she stored it for us, it was, mhm.
In the freezer, whatever.
Yeah.
It was a huge time saver and she was more than happy to do it. So, um, we'll, we'll definitely, you know, keep that up in the years to come. Um, so, um, also we, uh, welcome back our kindergarten through eighth grade students on Wednesday, August twenty-fifth. We're so glad to have them back and we welcomed our littlest dragons this week, our preschoolers have started in a staggered start and, um, they are back in the building and it's awesome to have them here. Uh, another great big thank you to Jack Hutchinson and the community at large for helping with the permanent structures. The structures are completed and they really are two of the most amazing structures you've ever seen with no windows. Like you go down there and you just can't even believe, they look like they've been there forever, they just naturally blend into the environment. Like you go down there and you just can't even believe, they look like they've been there forever. They just naturally blend into the environment. The kids have been just loving the whole experience. Um, and so really, we can't thank Jack enough and the community that, that helped get this, these two structures done. Um, I think we will have some grant money perhaps. Uh, we're gonna reach out and see if we can, if we're, when we're ready to put a third structure in. I'll get some grant money to help pay for that. Um, and really, I wanna make sure that I mention Sue Luskowski and Sam Wilson's name as staff members that have dedicated countless hours. They have been, worked tirelessly this summer and dragged their families here to help as well. Um, so they were Cindy Hansen left, Sam and Sue have really filled that role and it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's awesome. So, um, and we have a lot of staff members that have also helped out. We had a meeting, I think on Friday or Monday, I think it was Monday, um, to, to make the plan for the outdoor classroom in terms of the schedule and they've got a couple of new ideas that they wanna try. Just get our middle scores out there a little bit more, so, um, we're really excited. Uh, and as usual, it's been a community effort. India Field certainly was the occasion for these two structures, um, planned for, for our kids. Um, Jay, like, um, like, um, what's your name, Jeff? I mentioned that guy over there. It's late.
Oh, yeah.
Jay Doherty and Lance Whitehead came from La Valley Brinsinger. They did their presentation today, a slideshow presentation um, with, with the whole, with the whole, uh, staff. Um, all staff were invited to stay. Uh, definitely our certified staff were here. I did, we did video it, so we will upload it for, um, we could upload it for the community if you wanted to, us to, and then definitely, um, do for our staff as well so that they could see what was discussed today. Um, they have set up future dates to come. Jeff had mentioned that they will be here on the tenth. Engineers will be here to do a walk around the building. Um, and they'll be here around two-thirty and they'll, you know, do their thing and stay for as long as they need to. Um, definitely meet with Chris as well. And then, um, at the September fifteenth expansion committee, I know that meeting Jay and Lance are gonna review the survey questions that they wanna send out to the staff. Um, and then once that's approved, they'll send me the survey and I will disseminate it for the staff to be able to respond to. And then we made the, we made the decision today that they would join us on Friday, October eighth, which is the Columbus Day weekend. We always have a PD Friday, a PD day on that Friday, teacher workshop. Um, all staff are here that day, so it'll be a great day to just incorporate them into every, what we're doing that particular day. Many times that professional development day is a rotation of activities that happens. So, uh, we'll, we'll take teams through to meet with them and talk with them and give them some feedback and, um, they're very excited. The staff was, was very receptive to them being here today. Um, and I think Jay and Lance were, were happy that the staff was welcoming and um, didn't hear too many grumbles. Heard something about, you know, as they asked us, you know, what would you, how will you know this is a successful project? And somebody mentioned, it won't rain in my room. So they promised that that would not happen, that that would be an end goal for them. And they thought the bar was pretty low, that's where they were starting, so. Um, and as an update, I think Mr. Greaves, um, has been working with Chris. Chris Kupfoss is our new athletic director. We had somebody lined up, um, who, uh, had some other commitments come up and wasn't able to, uh, take on responsibility. So Chris had actually asked about it over the summer and was very interested in taking on, um, the role. And so we, Brian approached him and he said that he would do it and, um, he's gotten schedules together and he's gotten right on it. He and Brian have worked pretty closely. Brian has convinced just about every girl that they either wanna play soccer or volleyball. Uh, he's gone down, you can go ahead.
Yeah, so essentially, traditionally, fifth graders, uh, are designated to, to run cross-country. Um, when it comes to fifth graders, the size between a fifth grader and eighth grader is pretty significant. Um, so it's been discouraged around the league to not include fifth graders for soccer. Um, volleyball is fairly new to our school, so size is not necessarily an issue. Uh, but we reached around to other athletic directors, uh, Terry Leatherman, um, over at Barrington. Um, he kinda is the glue that holds it all together. There isn't hold it all together, so. So while it's kind of discouraged, they also saw that, uh, having us not in those two sports would, you know, affect the league greatly. Uh, so, uh, everyone kind of agreed to allow us to, you know, allow fifth grade girls on soccer team and on volleyball team. So I don't know if it may just be a one-time thing, we'll see how it goes and we'll see what happens. But, uh, hopefully all the girls who are interested actually show up so we can have a little feast.
So you, you were able to field, do we have a team for all of our traditional fall sports this year?
Correct, yes. Uh, for soccer, we actually had a huge tryout, six to eight boys. We have roughly twenty-two show up for tryouts this week. Um, Alan O'Neil is coaching that and I actually will be assisting. Uh, I'll be coaching there with him as well, so.
So we have boy and girl soccer.
The volleyball.
Across country and volleyball is awesome.
Yeah.
Great to get the kids re-engaged again.
Yeah, and the girls are so excited that they were, they were so excited that fifth graders joining them and they've really been talking it up and
I hope you have some wicked and issues fifth graders in the town.
I think we could for the zography all.
Yeah.
I hope they clear it up.
Uh-huh.
Make the Barrington people great.
I think our biggest obstacle, and we just sent out a letter, uh, will be buses, uh, at this point, uh, buses are pretty much non-existent. Uh, we'll see what happens over the next few weeks if we get more people. But, um, who are, uh, it's kind of gonna come down to parents carpooling and, and making a community effort to get kids to the events. Thankfully, most of the soccer, uh, games are in cross-country within the area. Volleyball is a little bit spread, more spread out. There, it might just be situational where we might have to quote-unquote forfeit a game, uh, because of distance, et cetera, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Well, thank you to all the coaches and Chris for stepping in, uh,
Yep.
doing his part and getting it off the ground again.
Yep.
Any other questions for?
Well, I'm not done.
Are you still going?
Yeah.
You handed the baton.
Well, only so he could give the update.
The baton was handed.
And I did send, I sent a one call now out to fifth, eighth graders and I, I started with the school board on that information as well. Just in case you, like, you don't have students here, so I wanna make sure you know what's going on. Um, and so, um, Mr. Greaves, this upcoming, this is upcoming information. It's important. Mr. Greaves, Mrs. McConnell and I will be meeting with teams, grade level teams on A-days. You know, we're rotating, we have our six-day rotation, so um, Mr. Greaves came up with, he's, you know, he's several good ideas throughout the year and they're, they're spread out and this one was such a good one. Um, our A-days will be admin days, so on that particular day, we'll be meeting with teams of, of teachers. Um, we'll be rotating through four or five teams each A-day. Um, just so we can touch base with, with, um, our teams. Our IA teams are in the rotation as well in our preschool. Um, just to talk about, you know, do a team check-in and a teacher check-in. Uh, we wanna make sure they're doing a student check-in and a data check-in as, and, and a lot of our teams already meet with our reading specialists and math specialists, but we oftentimes can't get to those meetings, so we're dedicating A-day to, um, just admin that particular day. Um, and we were, our first one is actually tomorrow, so we'll be meeting with our fifth through eighth grade tomorrow um, during their planning period and, um, we're excited to get that up and running. Um, and the hope is also to keep rotating through the policy, the policy ideas that you want. Um, just start to keep generating lists as we're going through and, um, and being able to report out on that, 'cause I know you, you've asked for that several times, so. Um, I have a good list going with our IA team and, and my hope is to keep that list going with all the other teams. Um, and then this Friday, as a reminder, no school. Mrs. Whitty put out a great email this morning. Google sent it and everything at six AM and said, you can wear jeans on Friday. People are like, well, we're not gonna be here, we're in our pajamas. I had to recant and tell them that actually, you know, that they could take Friday off and they can wear jeans on Thursday. So, uh, so no school Friday and no school Monday and happy Labor Day to all. Um, and just lastly, picture day is next Thursday. That's a big day, September fifteenth. And now I'm done.
Now you're done. Alright, any additional questions for admin? None? Alright, uh, that brings us to CRB. I don't believe we'll have met yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Uh, and Nate, I don't know if the high school auction says anything to report about, but you're a part of it. Okay, so that brings us to policy, which we pushed for another meeting. And was there any additional informational items that we didn't catch before?
Did you wanna mention the
Just remember, it's
Barrett, Barrett's commission.
Barrett's commission.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you for that. Sorry.
So we have informational items. Gigi's gonna present us an informational item.
We have an informational item. Uh, well, I had noticed that there was, um, a policy that is coming up was in the list that we had tangled and then we're not getting to, but it's about, um, a board evaluation. And, um, the, um, I, I was thinking, oh, I, I, I know that I've heard of that before, but I don't remember using a specific tool for that. So I just emailed Barrett at the NHSBA to just see if there were already tools that were created that we might be able to use to get some feedback on our work. Um, and, uh, I believe that he did send me some information on that. So I, I would like to share that with you so that we can discuss.
Let's get it uploaded and, and then we can add it as an agenda item. Uh, you have it already? Is it something we'll be able to see sooner than later?
I, I, I wanna say yes. I got, uh, two emails from him and the second email I didn't get to read, but I I think the first email said he was, uh, busy and, but that he was put on his list. And I have a second email and I believe that it is
So presuming you have it, let's add it to the next agenda for discussion. And then if it's, uh, not fully there yet, then we need to hold it here and be able to refer it.
Thanks, thank you.
Awesome. Any other informational items? Alright, uh, public comments, gentlemen, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike McKemper. Yeah, I noticed the mask policy and it was pretty detailed and I like that. Uh, one thing I don't know if you guys considered or remembered is you're busing people in all of different grades and putting them in the cafeteria and in the gym and the masks are primarily off when they're in here. So just something to consider. You know, I'm, I'm sure you figured out in about two seconds and make sure they mask up when they show up, but clearly something, we just wanna make sure we consider when we're talking about the mask options.
Any other comments?
Sure.
Yeah, so I, I know it's not a back and forth, but I just wanted to kind of pose a question for the next time there is an opportunity for you guys to discuss. And I, I honestly just don't understand what the goal of the COVID mitigation policy is. And by that I mean, sorry, by that I mean, other policies you have make perfect sense. You have an absenteeism policy. The goal of that is to get the kids in school. We have the, the no guns, no drugs, no, no cigarette policies because we wanna keep that away from the kids. When we look at the COVID mitigation policy, Mr. Mr. Greaves, is it Greaves, right?
Greaves, yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Greaves says that right now we're, we're not socially distancing. There's, there's a lack of area. I get it, you're, you're kind of anti to what you're able to do, so that's off the table. Um, we've kind of cut back on some of the deep cleaning and the science does say that on services it doesn't come, so I can kind of understand that concept as well. We're cohorting as much as we can, but not as we did last year, and then masks are optional. So when I look at what the goal of the policy is, I, I honestly don't know. Because if the goal of the policy is to keep the kids as safe as possible, we would err on the side of caution. And everyone up there at one point or another has kind of used that commentary or used that, that phrase, err on the side of caution. And then we look at the other side and say, well, we wanna not necessarily make masks go on forever. And I, I get that. If anyone ever had a long beard and facial hair with a mask, it's not fun. I, I don't like them. Um, I wear them because I try to set an example for my kids who are under the vaccine policy. And tangent real quick, shout out to the, to the staff and the administration here. You know, my kids come home second, uh, second grade in kindergarten. First two questions they're asked are, how was your day? Uh, how did the masking go? Cause I'm trying to reinforce that. And they've had great days, so kudos to the administration and the teachers here, and they've also done really well with masks. Uh, and surprisingly, the percentages that I'm, I'm guessing, and, and Mr. Greaves is a thirty, from what my kids have said, that's what I'm hearing too. About thirty percent of the kids that are around are wearing it based on their feedback. And the teachers have done a fantastic job, the administration, when they're walking around. Um, the second day, my son Jackson was like, oh, I saw the principal with even her mask on and they really got it kicked out of them. Um, so I, I just wanted to kind of throw out a, a shout out, cause I don't want this to be negative, but I, I honestly don't understand what the goal of the policy is. Because the entire policy is about choice, uh, or it seems like it's about choice, giving them the opportunity to choose what makes sense for them. But every other policy has a clear, clear set goal. We're trying to get a certain resolution to occur. And it feels like that's missing here because it is a political topic. There's a lot of people that are very vocal and, and very steadfast in their, either, uh, want to wear a mask or want for their kids to not wear a mask. And I get that. You guys are in a precarious position, uh, where you have to make decisions that impact five hundred people, four hundred people. Um, but I really would appreciate at some point, is that have an understanding of what the goal is. Is the goal to mitigate exposure to COVID or is the goal to quote-unquote get back to normal? And the longer we kind of turn away from mitigation efforts, I think that, that normal post is moving the opposite. So, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Obviously, uh, no other citizens for comments, so thank you, gentlemen, for waiting us out tonight. I know, uh, makes for a late night. Um, Patty, I don't believe we have one bullet.
No.
Alright, and we don't have any appointments or resignations?
No.
So that brings us to item number twelve. Good for motion.
I move to adjourn.
Anybody wanna argue with Gigi about that?
Second.
Alright, the motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thank you, sir.